Hey, Weary. I call the order of the meeting of the common council for Thursday, November 10th, since we are reconvening this evening. Clerk, well, before we get to the clerk, I will entertain a motion to appoint temporary interim clerk Manley for tonight's meeting.
Make a motion to appoint a temporary interim clerk.
Alder Scannell makes a motion. Seconded by Alder Stevens, any discussion here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. Clerk, I think everyone's in the meeting and voting?
I'm the president.
Very good, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we are now under our third resolution. We had a motion to reconsider that item, so that's where things stand from a meeting perspective, and was just hoping that Director Ellenbecker might be able to refresh her memories, give us a little bit of a recap where things stood when we recessed last time.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, for out of the joint personnel and finance meeting, in total, the levy actually went up 122,603, but then at the common council meeting on Thursday, 387,371 of expenses came back out for a total decrease in expense of 264,711, but due to the other changes that we made, the levy did go down 1,028,247. So, at this point, the mill rate is sitting at a 21.6% reduction. Last year's mill rate was 980, and right now, it's at an estimated 7.68.
Great. Move Alder Johnson as the chair, excuse me, as the Chair of our Finance Committee for some thoughts.
Yeah, and actually, Mayor, I think there are some people here that want to speak on this item, so I'm going to make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties.
Sounds good. Alder Johnson makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Brunet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. And I have a list here, so I'll read through them. If I am at the bottom of the list and you have not spoken and you'd like to, just approach the podium, state your name and address. So, we will start with Liv Miller.
Hello, everyone on the council. My name is Liv Miller. I am in Council District Number Five. I'm here to oppose the cuts in the budget. I am in favor of the budget as the mayor proposed it. Prices going up has really stung. You know, it does hurt to see my bills going up, my quality of life not improve at all because of that. It would hurt a lot more to see my quality of life go down while my prices are going up. I, and I believe the city of Green Bay, are willing to invest in this community because I and we have seen it working. Things are working the way they are. We're investing in all of our departments. We're giving to the people who need those resources to support everyone here. I want to keep that going. To see property taxes, rent going up, and to see these services decline at the same time, that's what's going to hurt that sense of community, that sense that we do lean on each other, and that we do want to give back to each other, to the city, to these departments. Losing both at the same time, I just really think is going to hurt everyone's willingness to invest, willingness to come together, and I just don't want to see that happen. I fear for what's going to happen to our sense of togetherness, our willingness to gather and our willingness to support each other if we are not continuing to serve our people in the way that we have been able to and the way that the mayor foresees we could continue to do even better. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Any questions from council? All right, thank you. Next up is William Acker.
My name's William Acker. I live at 3217 Nicolay Drive. I spoke at the last meeting, but I heard a couple of comments that were kind of concerning to me, so I did some additional number crunching that I wanted to share with you this evening pertaining to the budget. And it had to do with how much taxes were going to be going up for people in smaller homes or with lower incomes. And out of curiosity, I decided to run the taxes for a house I used to live at 30 years ago on Beauchamp Street in Green Bay. A very small house, 900 square feet approximately on the main floor, 300 square feet or so upstairs, a total of 1,260 square feet or so. And on this house, the assessed value of that house is going up 64.3%, which is much higher than what we're hearing that the average residential house in Green Bay is going up about 43%. So, obviously, this house is going to take a pretty good hit on the taxes. What I'm showing you is the taxes for 2022 and the taxes for 2023. And from 2022 to 2023, when we add up all the taxes, and I realize this meeting tonight's only for the city of Green Bay, but the total taxes on this house is going to go up 32.52%. That's a huge increase, and that's going to be a real burden on those people. I didn't find that to be the only case. There's also a resident in my neighborhood that's looking at around a 27% increase, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, that the increases we're talking about may be hitting some of the people in the smaller homes in Green Bay a lot harder than maybe the overall average, so I wanted to be able to share that with you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Thank you. Next up, Natalie Hoffman.
Hi, my name is Natalie Hoffman. I live at 1217 Chicago Street. I am here to oppose the cuts that y'all are making today, just because I know that out of the proposed budget increase, $1 million has already been cut from that increase, to my understanding, and knowing that the vast majority of the city budget goes to like things like fire and police, so safety issues, and then also public works and parks, like those are direct essential services that serve our communities, and the more we cut from that budget, the harder it's going to be to be able to meet the needs that those services, you know, give to the people who live here in Green Bay. And I can't help but thinking about, when was it, like maybe seven or eight years ago, when we halted the wheel tax, or there was something where like, you know, it kind of set us on the path to having roads that hadn't been maintained, and we are still catching up from halting that process, and so it kind of makes me, I urge you guys to consider that if we are not, you know, putting more into those services right now, that if we don't keep up with them now, that will come back to bite us later, and that comes back to bite everybody, not just the people in this room, but everybody in our community. So, I urge you to consider that when considering the budget cuts. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Last, we have Casey Hicks.
Hello, council members. My name is Casey Hicks. I live on 1019 Emily Street, Green Bay, zip code 54301. Last year, my wife and I bought our very first house here in the city of Green Bay, and we were extremely excited and proud to do that because we met in the city of Green Bay, we got our degrees in the city of Green Bay, UW-Green Bay, and this is the place where we want to be able to start our family. And so, it's really important to us to have essential city services, and for us to want to give back to the community that we feel like has given so much to us and helped us to get started in our lives. So, that's why I'm asking you all to oppose any more cuts to the proposed budget for 2023, and particularly think about us being homeowners and taxpayers and residents here in the city of Green Bay, and how the city's main role is to serve its citizens. And I think specifically too about when I was a big with Big Brother's Big Sisters, and the little that I was mentoring. His family were renters, they're not taxpayers, but he and I and his family benefited immensely from the plethora of different services that the city provides and the amenities that the city provides. Every weekend or every weekday, when I'd go to pick him up, we would go to either Astor Park, which is really close to where I live, just a few blocks away from my house, and we'd play basketball. And then we'd go get Culvers afterwards, and I'd treat him for beating me because he is way better at basketball than I was. But, so, I just think about the experiences and memories that I've built up with him and the pristiness of our parks, of our recreation, and what that would mean if there were cuts to them, even if they're miniscule. And I also think about the fact that budgets are not just line items and numbers on a piece of paper, they're value statements. They show what we as a community and what we as a city value, and what we want to put our time, effort, resources, and money into. And one thing that I value more so than saving 20 to 30 dollars on my annual tax, property tax bill from the city, is treating workers and treating city employees and staff well, and making sure that they have the resources, the compensation, the staffing, people on their team available to actually carry out city services to the fullest capacity, to serve us as GBD residents and citizens and taxpayers. I value that a whole lot more, and I hope that the city council values that as well because we should be making those investments in our people who make our lives better every single day. So, that's all I have, and thank you for letting me speak.
All right, thanks for your comments. Any questions? All right. Casey was the last name that I had on my list, but if anyone would like to speak, just approach and state your name and address.
I'm sorry, I never figure out how I'm supposed to get on the list. I'm sorry. I'm Lynn Garilock. I live at 483 St. Bernard Drive in Green Bay, and I know my former colleagues on the council are thinking, "Oh, God, what's she doing here, talking about the budget?" Because we know I am not good at finance, I'm not good at budgeting. I used to get a lot of help from Diana Ellenbecker, but I'm here tonight because I do want to share just a little bit of insight. I did sit there, well, no, I only sat there for seven months. I spent 17, for 17 months of my tenure in the basement on Zoom, but I did sit in your place, and I do have a little bit of insight I'd like to share. I just want to remind you, from my experience, I know that when I got elected alder, that didn't teach me a thing about running a city. One day, I was an ordinary citizen, and the next day, I had the most votes, so I was an alder, and I didn't learn anything by that about running a city. The good news is that there are some people who do know about running a city, and they're right behind you. These are the folks that run the city on a day-to-day basis. Whether you and I show up at City Hall or not, they're running the city, and they've been doing it for a long time, and they're not elected, they're educated, they're licensed, they're certified, they're experienced. They've been doing this for a long time, and I found in my two short years on the council that I could trust our city directors. I trust every single one of them. In my short tenure, I did not meet anyone who works for this city that I didn't like or that was ever wasting time or wasting money. I feel really good about the way the city is run by our staff, and so, I learned to trust their integrity and their judgment. So, now, if I had to decide whether a bridge should be fixed this year or next year, could we wait till next year? I wouldn't ask an alder, I'd ask Steve Grenier. If I had to decide what kind of playground equipment to buy for a big fancy new park, I wouldn't ask an alder, I'd ask Dan Ditchite. If I had to decide whether we can afford to go without a new fire truck, I wouldn't ask an alder, I wouldn't even ask the mayor, I'd ask Dave Litten. So, I hope you will, you'll base your decision on their wisdom. I never found them to ask for something they didn't need, I never found them to waste money. They've told you what they need, and I hope that you won't cut the budget anymore. Please give them what they say they need. Don't be sidetracked. It's so easy to be sidetracked by a title or a front row seat. Just remember, they're the folks who know, and I hope you'll listen to them.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other testimony from the public? All right, entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor made by, oh, we have some people online? Very good. For our guests online, just state your name and address, and then customarily, we have three minutes to offer some testimony.
Thank you. Is this to me?
Yes.
Okay. Ned Dorf, 1321 Emily Street, and I am chiming in to ask my alder and the other alders to consider restoring many of the cuts to the mayor's proposed budget. I understand that services cost money, I understand that labor costs money, I understand that materials cost money. I don't expect our city workers to work for free, or that materials are magically going to get less expensive over the next year. To shift some of our city costs to ARPA funds rather than the tax levy, I think we're playing a shell game if we do that. We are pretending that we have enough, combining that ARPA one-time money with our tax levy budget, and then it brings me a lot of concern for next year when the budget cycle comes up again, and we can't be enough to replace those funds. So, I'd really like, I'd like my alder to speak to that, or possibly our finance director to speak to that concern. Our citizens expect services and expect the continuity of services throughout the years. I know there are some that enjoy slashing services, slashing the budget, so that you can posture as a taxpayer friend, but to say that, you know, we can get rid of 1 million here, 2 million here, so that you can save somebody like me who has an average home, it's in the average assessed rate, $20, $40, $60 a year, that's not being a friend to me, and I am a taxpayer in the city. I want to see a continuity of services, and I'm not the only one. There are plenty of people that have spoken earlier tonight, my neighbors, my students, we all depend on city services. Please think about the things that we've been short on the last few years at our Parks Department. Think about how could we make our transit system more robust? This is not a great time to be cutting services when we've already seen complaints over the last several years of lack of staff. So, please, I hope that you see fit to restore some of the cuts, and we're actually paying for ongoing services out of the tax levy and not through ARPA dollars. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any questions for him? All right, now, entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and the floor is closed. So, we are still on that third resolution, and I will recognize Alder Johnson again.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just ask Director Ellenbecker, I think expenditure restraint is a really, really important discussion topic here, and I will freely admit, my first couple of years on council, it was something, a concept that eluded me, until I really started to see where the $1 million of sales tax money kind of really hurt us, and quite frankly, the conversation we're even having here today. So, I'm going to ask Director Ellenbecker to, one, provide another overview of expenditure restraint, but then, two, what your sort of crystal ball looks like into the future in terms of how that might impact future budgets, so that we can all be aware of and understand what our decisions today here, what that weight means.
Sure.
Director.
Thank you. For 2023 budget, using the 2022 levy information, the calculation for expenditure restraint, I should actually back up. Expenditure restraint is one of the calculations, one of the state limits that is put on a municipality, saying that you can take your expenses up only a certain percentage. The major drivers of the calculation is CPI, Consumer Price Index, and then any net new construction growth, there's a calculation, a portion of that. So, this year, going into the 2023 budget, it is allowing us to take expenses up 8%, and that is unprecedented. Typically, it hasn't been that high. I'll just go back to the last couple of years. Last year, it was 3.7, the year before, 2.3, 2.6 the year before, and 3%. And that is just based on CPI. So, all those years, the city was only able to take their expenses up, and average about 2.6%. 2017, we were only able to take our expenses up 1.4%. So, what that says is, the reason why they allow that is because as the expenses went up because of the CPI, we also have increased expenses. So, this year, the expenditure restraint will allow us to go up 8%, and that is where we are allowed to go up about $7 million in expenses. And yes, I think there's a comment saying, "We don't have to max out your expenditure restraint, it's just the limit, limited to how much you want to take." Well, what happens is if you don't use it all, that whatever number you end with expenditures at the end of your budget, that becomes your base for next year. So, now, next year, if the expenditure restraint percentage goes back to kind of the average, 2.6%, you can take this expense, and you can add up to 2.6% next year. Well, with a COLA, a cost of living increase of 3% built in then for the whole year 2024, and any contractual contracts for police and fire, you would have to take all those into consideration. If the year before, the year in like 2024, we're only allowed to go up, let's say, 2.6, 3%, we would have to take the base where we end this year, and then you're allowed to go up to that percent. So, that would say you might have less than 3% to go up in expenditures. If your salaries alone are over 3%, you are, you were actually going to be over expenditure restraint, and then there's other things, other expenditures that would go up. So, what happens is if anything you don't put in this operating budget and you want to postpone and push off to the next year, you potentially, you're setting your base low this year, and so if anything you hold off now and want to add to the next year is because you use one-time funding this year, I'm not sure next year you have enough to even cover your expenses for next year percent-wise, and then you would also are going to, potentially, there's some of these things you want to, might want to try to put back into your budget for the following year.
Okay. So, I'm not necessarily advocating that we have to spend up to that max.
Correct.
I just, I wanted you to provide that overview so that we all understood, again, the impact, and when you use one-time money to cover operating expenses, it lowers your basis for next year, and so that's when you run into situations then where you won't have the capacity to retain what we have. And next year, the year after, you will be forced to eliminate positions, and so, it's just, again, I just, I wanted us to understand that, and we have a limited number of tools. And I think that, in fact, we have no tools, really. We don't have a sales tax, we have levy limits we need to contend with, we have expenditure restraint. So, to me, this process is just about, just as much about fiscal intelligence as it is fiscal responsibility. And I've often, there have been some budgets that I've supported and some that I have not, and there have been different strategies that have been deployed that I didn't necessarily care for, and I've always said I wanted the levy to figure out how to carry that burden. But this year is a little bit unique and distinct in that regard because ARPA is entering into that equation, and then, of course, just the significant CPI that we have in front of us. So, I want, I share all of that because I want us to resist the temptation to overuse ARPA to pay for operating expenses that then really puts us into a challenging fiscal position next year, really a structural deficit that would be potentially hard to overcome, depending on where CPI ultimately ends up for next year. So, I did, as all of you know, as the Chair of the Finance Committee, after the last meeting where there was sort of a directive given to staff to come back with a proposal that is equivalent to 20% of the overall increase, and that, that number comes to, rounded up, comes to $1.04 million. And so, I did meet with Director Ellenbecker, and certainly, she can go over all of the ideas that they've come up with, but I took the liberty, and I'm going to present it right now and let you guys react to it. But I took the liberty of constructing what I'm going to call an omnibus amendment that gets us to that 1.04 million, and I call it omnibus because I'm going to present it as one amendment, and I'm going to opt not to individually introduce these. And I'll be very frank with you, that there are some proposals that staff came back with that suggested the creation of new fees or the elimination of services that I personally flat-out rejected, that I would not include as part of this amendment. I understand that they were trying to create solutions, but I don't have the appetite for those, and again, if anybody here has, wants to ask Director Ellenbecker about those, I certainly encourage that. But in the meantime, I'm going to offer up this amendment, and then I'm going to, I'm going to kind of go over each item. So, I would move to amend, and this is split up into two things. One is revenue, one is expenses, because again, for those not overly familiar with municipal finance, there are two ways that you can reduce your levy impact. You can grow revenue, or you can reduce expenses, or it can be a combination of that. So, on the revenue side first, and this is based on actual conversations with staff and understanding what our budget can tolerate. My motion's going to include to increase the interest expense by $200,000, and that's based on an expectation that we will get a better rate of return on the money that we have invested. A motion to increase room tax revenue by $75,000, and that's based on where the marketplace is trending right now. To increase reinspection fees by $50,000, and there seems to be a great deal of confidence with our Community and Economic Development Department that they can do that, and to increase EMS revenues by $200,000. So, that is a total on the revenue side of $525,000. On the expense side, we have parks equipment and garbage cans that is a one-time expense for $49,900. My motion is requesting that we remove that on the expense side and that we fund that with lost revenue ARPA. To reduce the previously increased seasonal salary budget, previously, we increased that by just north of $200,000, I'm recommending that we scale it back by $50,000. There is one-time expense in Community and Economic Development Department for equipment of $24,000. My motion is that we remove that from the expense and we use lost revenue ARPA to cover that. A 40% reduction in turnover. We have an account that after it was amended, there was $650,000. I'm proposing a 40% reduction in turnover, which would be a $260,000 overall reduction, and I'm not identifying a department. So, what that means is it gives the administration the latitude to determine how to hold certain positions open to meet that $260,000 obligation. I'm proposing the balance of the seasonal salary increase. You may recall, again, it was like 202,000, we said we were going to use 43,000 of ARPA to cover it, and the rest was going to be placed on the levy. I'm proposing that the balance, which is $109,127, that the balance of that be ARPA. I'll be honest with you, it's not my favorite proposal because it is an operating expense, and that is one that's going to hurt us next year, but if that's something that can get us over the hill, I wanted to include that in the motion, and it would reduce that expense by $109,000. And then the last one is similar to turnover, contractual services, $21,973, and again, I would give the latitude to the administration to determine from which departments that that would come. That'd be a total expense of $515,000 that would be removed from the proposed budget. So, between revenue and expenses, that would be $1.04 million removed from the levy that would drive our mill rate down to whatever calculation that would be. So, again, I'm offering that as an omnibus amendment, so kind of all or nothing.
Is there a second for Alder Johnson's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Stevens. Discussion on the motion?
Mayor, just a real quick point of information. So, this is the proposal that I'm putting in front, and of course, I like this proposal, I vetted it with staff, and they seem to be okay with it. They're okay with it, meaning there wasn't support for it in the sense that they don't want to cut anything, but this is something they can survive with. But I also want to be clear that this is not meant to prevent anybody else from offering additional amendments, because I'm sure many of you still have some of those to offer, and I just want to be clear that that was not my intent to do that.
Thanks, Alder. Further discussion, Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alder Johnson. The proposals that I guess are coming from staff, is there paperwork or handout for that?
Director Ellenbecker, as Alder Johnson indicated, is prepared to offer if people are looking for additional ideas.
Because I had hoped we would have gotten that before the meeting, because you never want to come to the meeting totally not knowing. totally not knowing what's going to be presented. So if we have that, it would be good to hand them out.
Yeah, Director Ellenbecker can present those.
If you could do that, please. And then I'm going to vote against this because I think we should do it one at a time. I'm a line item person, so I'm going to vote no and we can handle it one at a time. Thanks.
Any other comments on the motion? Saying none, all in favor will indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposing?
No.
No.
We can use the board? And again, this is, the roll call here is on the amendment that was offered by Alder Johnson.
Mayor, I think Alder Steyer was having a hard time calling in. If we put him on the phone, can he?
I believe he is, is Alder Steyer in on Zoom? He might need to vote verbally, but he is on the Zoom.
Okay. He just mentioned that it was, the connection was a little shaky.
Shaky. Okay. Alder Steyer, are you with us?
He did text and said if we called his wife's phone, he would give a verbal vote. I know we've done that, we've done that before. That is not unprecedented.
There is a roll call, so there's no discussion here right now. But if somebody can get Alder Steyer on the phone, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's his wife's phone, he said. Alder Steyer, you are on speakerphone. We just need your roll call vote on the amendment.
I vote yes on the amendment.
Thanks, Alder.
I'll leave this phone on, okay? Just leave this, I'll leave this phone on for votes.
I'm going to take you off speaker, though.
Alder Rec?
Oh, I didn't, I'm not, it's not coming up on my.
Chris, Chris, how would you like to be recorded? Alder Rec, vote to no? That's right. It appears to be six to six, so I vote in favor of the amendment and it is successful. Additional comments from council? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I can't really state the reason why I voted no because we already voted on the motion, obviously. But I guess for staff, kind of along the same line Alderman Weary has suggested, were there any cuts that we recommend? Because the reason why I wish we would have discussed it, maybe that was my error, was when we talk about increasing revenue, 200,000 for EMS or fire services, that's rather substantial. So before we vote on the final budget, it would have been nice to get that reassurance from staff that that's actually attainable. Not that I don't trust the guy to my left, but those are just concerns, so if you could elaborate.
No, there, Burnett, do you mind if I offer a point of order?
Alder Johnson?
Really, a point of information more so, just because I did whisper this to Alder Weary, but I think it's good for all of council to hear it. Even though that passes a whole, certainly any member of this body could choose to reverse any single item if they chose to. So I just kind of wanted to offer that up from a procedural perspective if you wanted to do that, so.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to hear from staff what some of the suggestions and ideas that were gathered. So up until just maybe a few conversations with department heads, I don't know what those recommendations are.
Alder Burnett, are you talking specifically to the ones that Alder Johnson had outlined or additional ones?
Probably, I guess both, but Alder Johnson, if we go ahead and support this, which it seems like we will be, just like to make sure that we're not going to have a huge budget deficit in the middle of the year.
So just to talk through some of those revenue lines potentially? Director Ellenbecker?
Yes, thank you. As you know, interest rate continues to rise. And so when we put this original budget together, the projection for interest, that was really put together in the beginning of August. And since then, the interest has, rate has gone up one, if not two times since we really put that budget together. And so we are seeing an increase in our revenue, interest revenue. And then the first quarter of the year, we would expect our rates are still going to be high and you have tax collection. So we are expecting with the higher rates, we reevaluated and looked at the number and Assistant Finance Director Manley, we went and reestimated the number. And again, that wasn't that we were, I don't think we were being conservative when we put the number together in August. We have just seen a huge increase in the last three months, enough to feel comfortable to raise that interest expense by 200,000. I guess I can look, I just want to show where the line is itself. We were ready, taking the number up quite a bit. Last year's interest revenue budget was 120,000. And we have moved it up to 400,000 in the budget. Now we are very comfortable taking it to 600,000. I'm not sure where we are year-to-date.
450,000.
After 10 months, after 10 months, we're at 450,000 for this year, with the interest rate being higher at this point. And we're also going to have the higher balances early in the year, so we are very comfortable with the 200,000. Next item, we talked about the room tax revenue. Same thing, we made the projection in August. And since then, we are seeing some nice increases in our room tax revenue, the 4% of the 8% that the city collects. We have seen a nice increase in that, assuming we are back to potentially pre-COVID days. Our room tax last year was budgeted at 425. We've already taken it to 525. This is going to take an additional 75,000 up. It's taking it to 600,000 and year-to-date. We were well over 400,000 when this book was printed. And we are to date, 41 to 10. And to date, as of probably 10 months again, we are at 494,000. So again, both of them, three months later from the first time we did a projection, feeling very comfortable taking room tax up to, again, room tax is very seasonal, so the middle of the summer is not nearly as high as some of the other months. I will actually let Neil, Director, to talk to the $50,000 increase in the reinspection fees.
Obviously, Alder, we were fortunate enough to have council approve the second compliance inspector here earlier this year. So we certainly have the staff and the manpower to go out and do that. It is a little bit of a double-edged sword in terms of these types of fees, obviously going out and for doing that. The objective of these fees is generally looked at as more of a compliance tool rather than a revenue generating tool. So it's one of those situations where certainly if the directive is to go out and to pursue reinspection fees aggressively on problem properties, we can certainly do that. I think the keys to the success of that are certainly making sure that when we actually have situations that are legitimate situations of non-compliance, we're not waiving those fees, we're actually recording those revenues. And again, it's making sure we have a balance of not too aggressively pursuing that revenue stream and making sure that we're doing so, again, in the spirit of making sure we're getting compliance with our rules, regulations, not just simply as a revenue tool. But with the additional staff person, we do believe that there will be maybe some, a little bit of some more targeted efforts on some problem areas in the city. But we do believe that as a reasonable, we can achieve that number.
Is it okay to ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Thanks for that explanation, Director. One thing that I hear from a lot of constituents over the years is that, and again, it's revenue, so it comes at a cost. But there's, when there's an over-aggressive tactic use, there could be a person that is really trying their best to make an inspection correction. And then bang, they get an inspection fee in the mail, reinspection fee, and it's rather substantial. Can you share how much that is?
The reinspection fees, I think were increased to $75 a fine just this past year with the fee schedule. Generally, our inspections team is by the time a reinspection has been issued, there's just been usually a lack of communication or response from the property owner. In most cases, it's minded when in dealing with our staff or inspection staff. If that property owner has made a very clear effort to communicate issues with our inspection team and has worked with them to come up with a plan on how to address the issue, then that reinspection fee is generally not aggressively pursued. So as long as they are in communication with staff and they are actually making progress towards correcting whatever the issue is, staff is generally fairly lenient on issuing the reinspection fee. If for some reason there's promises and deadlines met and those are missed again, then certainly the reinspection fees would be reintroduced and gone after. But again, we don't have staff driving around intentionally trying to make sure that we're catching them at the absolute minimum time we can to get a reinspection fee issued. Again, the objective is always compliance with the code.
Thank you. Is it, if it's a reinspection fee, say of $75, how soon until another reinspection? Would you be assessing, reassessing or reinspection fees daily if there's not compliance? Because that's really drives people nuts.
Yeah, there actually, it is, I think allows for a daily reinspection fee. We certainly don't have the staff and manpower generally to go out and do that on a daily basis. Only, I think the only time that would actually occur is if it is a really, truly a major health and safety issue where they would be doing that aggressively to go out and do that. And again, as long as the property owner is being, communicating with staff and trying to make positive progress towards resolving the issue, that would not be the preference, the preference really to staff is to not have to issue the fees because there's certainly work involved in doing that, so.
Thank you, Director.
Director Ellenbecker? On this one?
On this one, question?
Yeah, Alder, scan. Go ahead.
Yep. So how much did we make in fees this last year?
I believe the last time we looked at, I think we were right approximately, right now, I think our year-to-date is right around 300,000.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Johnson? And of course, you know, we already conducted the vote on this, but I just want to be clear that my intent with including that in there was not to be a directive, to be aggressive with this policy. It's to be appropriate, as we are with every other property, to ensure compliance. And of course, at the end of the day, as I kind of shared with some folks, if we're going to impose certain cuts and restrictions and ask for growth in revenue areas and if we're not meeting those and a budget amendment needs to be made, I think those budget amendments need to come before this body. At the end of the day, we are passing a budget that sets the mill rate and that is the levy that will be collected. But things happen throughout the year with every single budget cycle and sometimes we need to pivot and change. And I think this one's no different.
Director Ellenbecker, you want to continue?
Yes, and then there was a fourth revenue item and that was EMS revenue. And I certainly can let the chief talk to that. But again, something that, you know, after they reforecasted after a few months later, they did feel comfortable with putting $200,000 more in the EMS revenue line.
Anything there, Chief?
Yeah, you know, the EMS revenues are, there's three components to that. It's our rate, so we raised our rates in the last year. And so we are reaping the benefit of the rate changes in the ambulance billing. There's volume. Our call volume is certainly substantially increasing this year and that we look for that to continue into next year. And then there's compliance. And by compliance, I mean there are a certain amount of requirements that Medicare and Medicaid requires from our individuals, our medics in the field, getting certain information. And our folks have, we put a focus on that, Chief Givens behind me here, put a focus and worked with our medics to make sure that we are getting as close to 100% compliance on the information that we're sending into Medicare and Medicaid. And that makes an absolute difference in the revenue that comes forward. And so we have far exceeded what we're expecting this year. That trend is continuing. And I will tell you that the revenues, both in Aloei and Bellevue, far exceed what we were projecting. As little as a year ago when we did the Bellevue, almost two years ago now, Bellevue merger. Both, in both municipalities, revenue there is far exceeding what our forecasts were. So in working with our billing company, we've got a third party that's based right out of Wisconsin here, in working with them, looking at trends and forecasts, we're very comfortable with, we were pretty conservative in the initial analysis, but we went back to them in the interim and we're very comfortable with what we've recommended there.
Thanks, Chief. Director Ellenbecker?
Okay, so, thank you. Those were the revenues that were in the motion. And then the expenses were, the director from Parks has, had offered up as he also looked through his budget and he had found some one-time purchases. These are new equipment for the parks maintenance worker that was added to offset contractual costs. So there was a trailer, a lawnmower, a snow blower, might have been one other item. And then they also had some garbage cans for the whole, for city deck and for the trail. So that was a total 49,900. So those were truly one-time purchases that should not be in the 2024 budget. That was 49.9. Then Alder Johnson had recommended a reduction in seasonal salaries by, I think it was somewhere around 50 cents, or it was deduction in the hourly wage, which was a reduction of $50,000.
Just a point of information on that, that was to reduce the increase, right? So we had increased it by, I believe, 202,000. So that motion was to reduce the increase by 50,000. So there's still an overall increase.
Yes.
Just not as much.
Right. 50 cents an hour per person was what was offered by Director Ditchey. Yeah, on this, Alder Rec?
Yeah, just to, so I just want to clarify because I, you know, was trying to take notes as fast as I could. So that, you mentioned ARPA with that?
So the reduction is kind of treated separately, right? But I did have it set up within the motion that ARPA covers all seasonal park employee raises.
So the extra 109?
I'll use round numbers just for clear explanation. We raised it by 200,000 at the committee level, okay? This motion reduces it back down to 150 and also has ARPA covering that entire 150.
Okay, thank you.
Director Ellenbecker?
And another item that was found in the budget, there was a replacement of the tough books for our inspectors and that is then an annual cost, I mean, that's probably about every four years. Again, something that we would not have to consider for another several years. So it really was a one-time cost of $24,000. So the suggestion was to use ARPA money for the one-time expenditure. Next item was a increase in the turnover line within the budget. And what happens is the City of Green Bay budgets full for every position to be filled all 12 months. But we know when a position, when somebody leaves, it takes time to recruit, fill that position. And so there are savings, savings within the budget that are with, the savings that just happen when there's an open position. So what happens, we budget full and then we back off a portion of that, of that salary raise for what we call a turnover open position. Or if you, you know, if the plan works well, you might bring somebody in at a lower stage in which the person left or I suppose it's grade, or step, I should say. So that was a slight increase in the turnover of $260,000. So that really means you're budgeting and that the departments then would consider a larger turnover for leaving some positions open for a longer period of time. Then there is the seasonal change that Alder Johnson just mentioned, the 109,127. And then to round it up to the 1,040, there was a suggestion to reduce the contractual services by 21,973. That has not been determined what budget department that would be in. But that was to round it to the even 1,040 that was requested.
Thanks, Director. Additional comments or questions, other ideas? Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I was just, because it's been brought up and asked, I think it's important that we be transparent. Some of the other suggestions that we had discussed, but again, I said I didn't like them, but maybe this body does. So I think it would be fair maybe for them to hear what some of those other thoughts were.
Director?
Again, this was a list that was supplied and just, I rolled it up. It was supplied by most of the department heads. There was a suggestion of seasonal salaries and just using more ARPA money. So that really was a, we really took that into consideration. There was a consideration for a new user fee for the waste center. So anyone who uses the waste center, that they would pay a fee to use the waste center. That was estimated a potential increase of maybe $200,000 if they would have to get a permit or have to pay to use the waste center. There is also, there's a tipping fee, so there would be, there was a suggestion you could invoice every dwelling unit of roughly $55,000, $55 each to cover for the annual tipping fees. We have roughly $1.6 million or $1.5 million in our budget. This would roughly offset that expense, plus, you know, plus taking administrative costs into consideration. If you were to do an annual tipping fee to every dwelling unit at about $55, you could bring in a new revenue source of $1.5 million. But again, that is a new user fee to offset costs. Those were the revenue suggestions. And then some of the other suggestions that were on the expense side is, as you know, we decided to phase in some bonding costs, things that we used to bond for and we have now brought them back into the operating budget where they belong. They don't qualify for really truly our capital, for our capital expense, and it really is an operating expense. We have moved $205,000 of bridge maintenance that historically has been bonded for on an annual, on an annual basis. We bond for it and so there was, we had moved that 205 into basis. We bond for it. And so there was a, we had moved that two-oh-five into the operating budget. The suggestion was maybe we phase it in, and then you maybe only bring half of it into the operating and leave half in bonding. So instead of two-oh-five, you know, you could cut maybe a hundred, a hundred thousand. But again, that's something we would truly want to try to make up into 2024. Other suggestions were moving the remaining twelve percent of forestry to the storm. That would be about a net change of about a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. That would reduce expenses, slight reduction in revenue, but it's really would move about a hundred-and-ninety thousand from the general levy, general fund, and over to storm. There is, was another suggestion, one of the expenses within the parks is that the city, they help pay for the, support the city band. That's a cost of about twenty-seven thousand dollars. That would be something that you could discontinue the support, at least in 2023. That would be a savings of twenty-seven thousand, five-five-five. There is a reduction that DPW had considered, some of the positions that were asked for to hold open this year. If you held them open another whole year, that would be a reduction of in-service, but that would be leave those positions open for the whole year, and that was a reduction of about four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. There was a suggestion that you could eliminate the bulk waste bunkers, and that would be a reduction of about fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred. Or you could reduce the eliminate bulk overflow weeks. That would be a reduction of about twelve thousand dollars. There was a suggestion on, you could move some, a poli, um, community policing over back to patrol, which could reduce some overtime. There could be a reduction in overtime based on that switch from community policing. And so those are the, those are the suggestions that had been, other than what has already been accepted or made as a motion from Alder Johnson.
Thanks, Director. Questions based on that, or other thoughts? Alder Campbell?
With all those, uh, suggestions, I'm sorry, with all those suggestions that you just brought up, do you have a total number on how much more of an effect that would have, or total of it all? Just like you just broke out here?
Yes, that would be, yeah. With additional fees, I mean, again, some of these I think are, would be very controversial, but of course, of something that you could, that would, could be an additional three million dollars with the changes to, reduction to the levy, increasing new fees, or holding more positions open, or reducing services.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts? Alder Grant?
I'm really sorry. I had a resident reach out to me. They didn't know how to speak up on Zoom, and they would like to talk. So, an appropriate moment, if we can reopen the floor for them? Apologize.
Do it now.
Can a motion open the floor?
Second. Alder Grant makes a motion open the floor, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open. So for the individual on Zoom, just state your name and address, and we've got three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Martin Weber. I live in District One. And I sent all of you an email over the weekend stating my concerns of this budget. And for those of you who possibly didn't get the chance to read it, I just wanted to say that we are in a very unique time right now. We are experiencing inflation that we haven't seen in forty years. And government should be run like a, a business would run things. And unfortunately, in times like this, services, expenses, whatnot, need to be cut. I state, I stated in there that it is experiencing a shrinking school district. We've got rising crime, taxes are going up. How is it that you expect to attract prospective residents and to keep current residents? I mean, you can see what's happening in California and New York and Illinois. In fact, my family and I moved up here from the city of Chicago for those very reasons, that it just, it did never end it. And we're going to get to a point in this city where you're going to say, what happened to the residents? And, you know, many people laugh at me for saying things like that. But you know what? Like I said, we're seeing it on the East and West Coast. I mean, you can only tax people for so long. I get that people do not want to lose their services. But again, we're in a unique time, and it, it, tough decisions really have to be made. And I, I hope that you all will make the decision. And finally, uh, I'm glad you think that this is a joke with your outfit. You're an embarrassment to the city, and there's no reason that you should be dressed like that.
Mr. Weber.
In a very serious situation, what?
Keep your comments to the item.
All right, okay, I'm finished. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other folks on Zoom? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Additional comments?
Yes.
Alder Scannell?
I'd like to know where we're at. Well, actually, I'd like to propose, uh, an amendment that we, uh, take the seasonal salaries, and we put that back on the levy. I think a structural deficit is a mistake, and I don't think it'll cost all that much more. And if we could get those numbers before we vote on this, how much difference that would make to the levy?
Second the motion.
Putting, putting it back, well, uh, you, your motion was a hundred and nine, and plus, uh,
Well, you're talking the fifty thousand?
One second, one second, guys.
Right.
One second. So the, the motion is to fully fund the seasonal salary increase in parks with levy rather than ARPA.
Rather than ARPA.
Is that correct?
Yes, and to add, that was a hundred-and-nine thousand, correct, with ARPA? Correct? And then I'd like to add the fifty thousand back into the salaries? Increase, right, to increase the salaries?
Could I just point of information on that, Mayor? Yeah, Alder Johnson?
So, so right now, the ARPA impact is one-oh-nine, one-twenty-seven, plus the forty-three thousand and some change.
Eight-sixty-eight.
So, so those two numbers added together, which again, is roughly a little more than one-fifty, right? One, let's call it one-fifty-five. But then, so that was the ARPA impact, but of course, the, the motion included a fifty thousand dollar overall reduction. But that was a reduction from the levy and was not?
From, okay.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a roughly two-hundred thousand dollar impact to the levy?
Right. Could, can I get those numbers before I make my motion? Because maybe I would, uh, two-fifty, want to go with the one-fifty if, if not, uh, two-fifty?
Fifty.
Fifteen?
Fifty was in the original motion. If you want to remove ARPA, that's another thing.
Right, right. Right, right. It's two different things. Right, so.
So Alder Scannell summarized what you're trying to do again?
Yeah. With the seasonal wages, I'd like to know how much if we put all that on the levy, the whole thing. And then I'd also like to know if we just put what was taken from ARPA, and just put that back on the levy and leave the rest reduced.
Director Allenbecker, manly?
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I thought it did. But you never know.
Undo, undo that.
I have my thinking cap on.
It's not working.
So with the, with the million forty that was in the motion from Alder Johnson, that brought our levy down to sixty-two million, oh, sixty-nine, and that includes also adding back the one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand onto the levy for seasonals. That would take our levy, again, to sixty-two million, oh, sixty-nine, nine-forty-two, and that would take your mill rate from a nine-eighty down to seven, propose seven-fifty-four from the nine-eighty, which is a twenty-three percent decrease from previous year.
So twenty-three percent?
Your, the twenty-three percent reduction in the mill rate?
In the mill rate.
The total number that you want to know, though, is two-hundred and two thousand, roughly.
Two-hundred and two thousand.
Rounded, yeah.
Oh, two-hundred and two thousand? For every eighty-two thousand is a penny, if that's what you're asking?
No.
Yep, well, sort.
Well, two-hundred and two thousand is the impact of the change.
Of the total parks.
Yes.
If you remove ARPA.
Yes.
And restore the fifty, you'd be at two-hundred and two thousand.
Yes. So I want that number, too.
Confirm that, Director Allenbecker?
Yeah, the two-hundred and two thousand would be about two-and-a-half cents reduction in the mill rate if you were to add, or that would actually be an increase, because it would be add back two-and-a-half cents if you put the two-and-a-half, yes.
Two-and-a-half cents, okay. So that would be my motion, then, that we put the entire seasonal salary back on the levy. And I think we're, you know, we're having trouble with, uh, well, wait and see if there's a second before I speak.
I think, I think Alder Johnson had seconded it.
Yep. I, I, you know, we have, we're having
Before you knew what it was.
Trouble with, uh, our seasonal help now. I think we need to do all we can to, to increase that wage. And then I think it's a huge mistake to, uh, use ARPA funding and create a structural deficit. We don't know what's going to be happening next year. I think it's wise to pay our ongoing operational expenses with the levy. It doesn't cost us that much, few cents. So I think it's, uh, fiscally wise. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, additional discussion. Alder Johnson?
Just really kind of a point of order, because I want to help Alder Steyer along here. He basically said that he can hear the meeting just fine. His mute button is broken, that's why he can't talk. So when we vote, he's asked that we call his wife's number. So I just, my thought process, Mayor, this is up to your ruling, is that if it's a voice vote, we let it go. If it requires a roll call, then perhaps we can call him.
Sure.
But I defer to you as chair to make a ruling on how we want to do that.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Yeah, I had him on, and then he hung up, because.
Oh.
Okay. Alder Weary, did you have?
Because it was on his wife's.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something I support. We've seen over the last few years what happens when we don't have enough seasonal staff. Our parks, our pools, Bay Beach suffer. And that's one of our gems here, is our parks. And so this is something I think we can restore. You know, there's a lot of other things that are proposed yet that we can still make up for it. And so I, I support the motion. Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? Thinking none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it? Additional discussion?
Yeah, Rachel.
Oliver Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One thing, I really appreciate Alderman Johnson, and as well as department heads coming up with suggestions of the motion that we approved originally. It increases revenue, and the thing about revenue is that you project high, and if your, your measures are not met, then you have a issue. And so what I was hoping for, although difficult, is a little more on the expense side. How can we cut some expenditures? And some of the staff suggestions, which I truly appreciate, the things like increasing tipping fees, and the possibility of putting more of our stormwater utility, our forestry budget to a stormwater utility, still increases expenses, not necessarily, or I should say, it still increases fees that we're collecting. So instead of a tax, it's still a fee to residents, which isn't, I don't really think that we were intending to promote. So in order to try to find a path to a budget that I can approve, I'd like it to make a motion to not eliminate, meaning not remove, this position from the table of organization, but simply not fill it for the entire year. That would be the workplace culture specialist, or whatever the position is, in the human resource budget.
Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Alder Campbell?
I believe that, yeah, I believe that that's a forty-five thousand dollar savings, roughly. Now, if you remember, at the last meeting, we decided not to fill that position for half a year. I don't seek to remove that from the table of organization. But when you look at finding ways to reduce big chunks of expenses with as minimal impact as possible, that's one of the few suggestions at that high-dollar amount that I can think of. We can just keep in mind that we have a very good chief of operations who is skilled in human resource work. He can slide over and accomplish some of that work. And then some of the tasks that he has been working on day-to-day can slide over to the chief of staff position in the mayor's office. So I think that it's one cut that if there's a shuffling of the deck chairs, let's just say, I don't like using that, because it sounds like we're talking about the Titanic. You know, shifting of job duties, I think that that's, that's reasonable, given some of the other cuts or increased fees that were being proposed by department heads. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. There was a motion and a second.
Like a board vote for Alder Steyer?
Yeah, and I, I would say, you know, Chief Faltz is very skilled, but he is not capable of cloning himself. So this is a very small department, and that would have a pretty major effect. Requested board vote, is there any discussion before we get to a vote? Alder Scannell, then Alder Eck, and then Alder Hutchinson?
Yeah, I, I don't support this. It's, it's forty-five thousand, yes, it's a, a nice chunk, but it's, if you're really going to make a difference, you're going to need to dig deep. I don't, I see this as superficial and not constructive for our organization. This is, you know, you're burdening our staff. It's pretty tight already. So I, I don't support this. I think this is a position that we need. I think it's, most growing cities have it. We should have it, you know, I mean, I don't like that we don't fill it for six months, but I can live with that, given the, the, our current environment we're in here now. But to basically keep it in the organization just but as a paper, a paper entity, doesn't do anything for our city. We've basically eliminated the position. So I, I don't support that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Motion open the floor, is a person here. Yeah, motion open the floor made by Alder Brunet, seconded. Seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it? Yeah, the floor.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Guzman. I live in twenty-seven-eleven Melkor Drive. I'm not going to lie, Alderman, I do kind of feel a little saddened by the fact that you didn't even know the name of the position that you're trying to cut. You just kind of pushed it aside, kind of like, I'm going to push this pencil right now. And the reason that I don't, I do take offense to that is because that position will help, literally, you're talking about culture. You're talking about things that have to do with my community, which honestly is a minority. And I don't, I mean, I don't want to talk about the politics, but if you guys saw the midterm elections, the Latino vote is going to be something that is something that we need to consider, and not just Latino minorities in general. And that position is going to be super important for you guys now, more than ever, so that we can all get on the same page as far as what can we do as a community. And as the mayor said, it's true, the person in HR, you can't duplicate him. This is a job that should be just for some, one person, to be taken seriously, to be able to connect with all the other businesses, to be able to bring that information here, and together include us. So in a way, this is definitely something that has to do with inclusivity. It has to do with equity. And you pushing it aside is something that I, and as a Latino member, and also as somebody from the Equal Rights Committee, don't think is, is, is smart at all. And I do take offense to it, just the fact that you didn't even know the name of the title. So, that's just my opinion.
Thanks for your testimony. I think, might have a question from Alder Burnett.
Yeah, Stephanie, it's not so much a question, but just a clarification. The reason why I didn't, I didn't know the title, because in the budget book, it's diversity and inclusion coordinator. But at last several meetings, we had talked about transitioning some of the roles into our workplace, like culture, and we have documents. And so in the budget book.
Sure.
It's a little different than what I think we have been discussing. So I didn't mean any offense. I know the position, but I just didn't know what to call it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, questions for our guest? Alder Hutchinson?
Oh, not a question for the guest.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Motion to close the floor. Motion to close the floor has been made by Alder Brunet.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it? Alder, I think it was Eck, and then Hutchinson.
Okay, so I got a couple of letters in the mail, anonymous, that are clearly from city staff. So I just wanted to read their, their thoughts. It's more than one person, and I actually got one a couple weeks ago, but I didn't, I couldn't find it before the meeting. But I'm just going to read. As far as the HR diversity position goes, I think it should be eliminated. I don't think the last person in that position ever came to work. I think she's just sent out an email every couple months. I don't believe the city would discriminate against hiring anyone that was qualified. Maybe the people pushing for this position can provide examples of how the city discriminated against a person of color, which could justify filling this position. Anyone is free to apply for any job with the city. The city doesn't need to people hired based on the color of their skin. It should be based on their qualifications. That was one. Another, many employees thought the diversity and inclusion position, which apparently that must be what it's called, was wasteful and not needed. Most employees never met or saw her. It appeared to be a full-time work-at-home employee that sent out emails every once, uh, once every week or two about how to be inclusive. A better example might have been to have the person on site meeting with and showing employees how to be inclusive. It is true, she was hired during COVID, but maybe that was a poor choice of time to hire her for the position. There were many opportunities since the workforce returned to work, but hardly anyone met her. A lot of employees are pleased that, um, a certain Alder asked about it and brought attention. A lot of employees are pleased that a certain Alder asked about it and brought attention to the position. So I just wanted to share that.
Thanks. Alder Hutchinson?
Okay, I think there's a lot of, not misinformation, but the, there's a need to affect the way people apply to this, to the city for city positions. It's not that the city is discriminating against anyone. It's just that there's certain cultures that have people who are able to do the work. They just don't know that the positions are available. They don't know the steps that you need to go through to get to the position. And sometimes they don't, aren't prepared for the questions that are asked. There's a huge need for this job. I mean, it's incredible and I'm, I'm glad the president finally showed his colors because I thought they'd be trying to get rid of this position all the way through next year. I mean, it's kind of incredible that we just kind of hang on and let's push it back, let's hang on, let's push it back. I'm hoping that the Alders who I've talked to, who said, well, we'll, we'll consider this and we'll vote on this down the road. I think we can, there's some financial impact, but not much. And they implied to me that they were for the position. I'm implying, I hope these Alders step forward and vote for this posi- position and vote this amendment down because it's so wrong. It's just so wrong. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell and then Alder Scanell? No? Alder Scanell?
Yes, and I think there's some misconceptions about the job. This is not just about ethnics. This is about handicapped people. This is about veterans. This is outreach to many minority groups that are not just by color. So, and if, if, if we could just have one more time, Director Falls, give us a rundown of just what all this position does. Thank you.
Sure, Chief Folds?
Sure. And I guess just to be clear too, I think we've had about four meetings where we've talked about all the accomplishments and what the position has worked on, but we can go through it again. So I think it's pretty clear at this point what it's going to work on. It's really about focusing on, I guess, the engagement and productivity of our employees, communication, work on our recruitment efforts for diverse populations, work on DEI training for supervisors, helping set up employee resource groups, also being on task force within the community when CivMec for a DEI initiatives. So those are really the, I guess, big items they're going to be working on.
Alder Scanell?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't a slight towards you, Scanell. I actually, I like the hat as well, so.
Alder Morgan?
I'm just pointing to Eck. I'm sorry.
Oh, Alder Eck.
I, I did want to say that I saw some kind of interactions on social media about applying for a job for the city. And I think the word used was clunky and that it's, I guess, going online, you have to do it. It sounds like you can't do it in person. I think maybe looking at that as ma- making it easier. Just, I'm just giving feedback of what, what I read.
Okay, thank you. Motion open the floor. Motion open the floor made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Burnett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? And just a reminder, state your name and address for us.
Iliana Herrera Flores, twenty-seven eleven Malkord Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Sorry, I don't like speaking in front of people, but I think that this is a very important position and is also a member of a minority community and working for the Latino Resource Center. I'm not here as my job. I'm just here also to say, I called the one hundred South Jefferson, the number here yesterday, and I was entreated very nicely. And it was because some people came to try and pay a ticket and there was a language barrier. They weren't provided the translator line. I think the person in this position would be helpful to make sure that those people are doing what they're supposed to be doing and providing translator lines. And not only that, they weren't treated well. They came to me, I wasn't treated well when I called. So I think having someone that is all about inclusion and diversity would be really great for the community. That's all.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Apologies for that experience. Any questions?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? The floor is closed. Alder Grant and Alder Burnett?
Just a few questions for Chief Folds. We did approve a translator with the ARPA funds. Where, what is the update on that?
Translation services, or translation of materials, not a position, was approved by our council.
Okay. And then just for clarification, we have currently two roles as recruiters in the HR positions?
Yeah, so this year right now, we have, we've had about fifty to sixty vacancies per year. We have over nine hundred employees and we have two recruiters for all of them.
Have they designated any of their time in those minority communities or with our veterans or anything like that within the high schools, trying to capture some of the mix and diversity in that?
I guess one thing I want to just make clear, they're, they're not recruiters. They're, they're HR generalists. So what they work on is advising employees when employee matters come up, advising supervisors on employee issues, interpreting our policies. So, and then also certain things like helping administer like ADA complaints or unemployment claims, things like that. So it's, they're not just two people designated for recruitment only. They, other, they have other responsibilities as well. So no, they have not really reached out to other communities or community groups because they just don't really have the time to do that because they're posting a job, they're working with supervisors to make sure the job description is correct, making sure the compensation is correct for the position. So at this point, they have not.
Okay. And then I just, for clarification for the rest of the council too, when we met, there's a total of eight positions within HR. Two are for the nursing and more health side, but otherwise there's eight kind of designated to HR outside of the medical stuff?
So we have, I believe, eleven positions. One of them is contracted out. That's our nurse. Then we have a wellness administrator. That's a tenth employee. Then we have a risk division, which is a safety manager, and then an HR assistant that's shared with that. So, and then we have our two generalists. An HR generalist that's designated for administrative and financial aspects of HR and then the HR manager and the chief operation. So we have two people that are designated for recruitment and other responsibilities. Then myself and the HR manager and the HR generalist are designated for training and DEI training for supervisors, but we don't have the expertise or the certification to provide that training. That's what we're asking for.
Okay. And then we do still allow people to apply in person, correct? They are not required to apply online?
I, yes, we would allow someone to apply in person. I think what we've done, I mean, it hasn't happened in a very long time, but I believe what would happen is if someone showed up in person, we could either fill out the application for them online or we would assist them in using a computer to fill it out online.
Okay, and we do have computers available to do so at City Hall?
Yes, correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Alder Eck? Or was it Burnett?
Burnett, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we get clarification on what you, the interpretation, what did you say it was?
It was for translation.
Translation.
Translation of materials is what the motion was.
Okay.
The item was, that was approved.
Is that not a position? Because I thought it was like a three-year. Can I get clarification on what that entails? Because I never saw anything posted.
We can. I mean, we definitely can do that.
Yeah.
You know, that's not really the purpose of this meeting, but if Director Ellenbecker or Treasurer Manley can find the documentation for that item,
I just thought maybe it would help if, if people are concerned about interpretation or interpreting. If that, if there was a, I thought, I understood it was as a position, so.
Understood. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts. The position, just, just for Director Folds, could you answer, how long have you been the HR? I know you're chief of operations, which oversees the HR department still, but how long were you the chief of, or the HR director for the city of Green Bay?
Five years. So five years and one year includes chief operations.
What year were you hired? That's twenty seventeen?
I was hired in twenty fifteen in the law department, then was promoted in twenty seventeen to the HR director.
So from twenty seventeen until this position was hired in mid-two thousand ten, so around three years, give or take. Can you explain your efforts as HR director in regards to workplace culture, diversity, inclusion, hiring and promoting and, and everything around what this position currently does? What, what efforts did you undertake then?
Are you talking about pre-two thousand twenty? Because I think the biggest.
Before the position was posted and filled.
I think the first thing we tried to do, well, I mean, we talked about workplace engagement. I think we wanted to improve on our communication between employees and supervisors. I think we worked on flexible scheduling with employees. We tried to promote remote work in two thousand twenty when that occurred. Those are some of the big things I can think of. I think one of the biggest things I tried to improve DEI efforts was to propose a diversity inclusion coordinator to be dedicated to that role. So that's what was proposed in two thousand twenty and I think we filled in mid-two thousand twenty. So I guess from there, and then another aspect was we also, I don't think I said this, but we also then put employee resource groups as a policy in place. I think that was supposed to be very helpful for our DEI efforts. And so I guess those are the big, big things I can think of.
So you did work on these elements, just perhaps not to the level that you would have wished to?
To a certain extent, that's true.
All right. So just for a sake of backtracking, because I was told I'm choosing my true colors. I'm not quite sure what that is because I, I mentioned quite clearly that my intent was to find a way to fill the position in July if we could make significant or substantial cuts in other areas and that, you know, aside from Alderman Johnson, we just haven't been able to do that. So in the two thousand twenty budget, it was proposed to fill this position. It was a little controversial at the time because it had not been part of our organization. And so there were a number of us that were unsure of the position and whether or not it was necessary, myself included. But then we posted the position. I think the intent with that two thousand twenty budget would be that we post the position in April or May, around that time in two thousand twenty. Well, sure enough, it took a while to recruit and fill the position, but right before the budget going into the two thousand twenty-one year, which would have been about two years ago, an offer was extended to that person. And we had the opportunity to remove that position from the table, or I should say, not fill the position. And I actually made the recommendation not to do that because you don't extend an offer to a city employee and then pull it out from under them. That's, that's a bad reputation for the city government. Person had been extended the offer. I didn't think it was appropriate. We could have killed it probably at that time, but we chose not to based on my recommendation. So the person was hired and one of the core functions of the position was to establish employee resource groups. Director Folds, when the person was in that position for a year and a half, did a single ERG group get formed or affinity group?
No, it does not. And all of the organizations we talked to about that have employee resource groups, I think they said it took like five to seven years before one employee started one. So I, I think we had it on the policies twenty nineteen. So, I mean, and we also had COVID in two thousand twenty. So I don't really fault employees for not starting one, but I do think this position would help facilitate and start one at some point.
Right. So, so going forward, you know, as we look at this budget and trying to get enough votes to vote for this budget, which isn't any guaranteed outcome, I, I do want to vote for this budget. I do want to make, you know, significant cuts in some areas. And it seems to me that aside from making substantial cuts like, you know, charging more for bulk pickup or eliminating a bulk pickup or increasing water bills more, some of the other things that were suggested, we need to find a way to make, you know, a significant cut. And I think that this is a cut and it doesn't mean that our DEI efforts or recruitment efforts or any of the workplace culture efforts die. It was done or maybe to a lesser degree than what was wanted prior to this position posted. But again, that's why we have a human resource director who is also chief of operations. And what I would completely, honestly and candidly say is I think when we made those changes, and this is absolutely no reflection on the person in the role, because I think he's a very competent professional person, but maybe he needs to focus a little more in that role on the H side, HR side of the corporate or the organization. And the chief of staff role, which is again a highly compensated position within our organization, needs to do some of the duties that the previous chief of staff had been doing. We can make this organizational shift and if that means not simply filling the position. Of course, now if anyone can make some cuts and get me on board with the budget, then I'm willing to reconsider, but I don't think we're there yet. So I, I definitely support this motion. Thank you.
Chief Folds?
I just want to state again for the, for the common council on that, this position has been budgeted since two thousand twenty, like Alder Burnett said. And so this position being budgeted for two thousand twenty-three, I think the increase, I mean, if you look at salaries, I mean, it's, it's, right now, it's an open position, so we budgeted for the benefits, which I believe is about ten, ten or nine, ten thousand dollars, I think, extra. But then you have to budget in the cost of living adjustment and the raises for it. So really, this is not really an added increase to the budget because the position's already been budgeted for the past few years. You're looking at this about a fifteen thousand dollar increase of overall budget. So this isn't a position that's driving the increase to our, our taxes or proposed taxes. It's not a new additional position. It's just a position that you'd be filling going forward.
But Director, or Chief, Chief Folds, if we don't fill the position, if we fill the position, we'd be paying an employee ninety thousand dollars with benefits, salary and everything included.
That'd be, it'd be close to that if they took family benefits.
So if we do not fill the position, then we would not be paying ninety thousand dollars?
And you could say that for a lot of vacant positions right now.
So we'd be saving ninety thousand dollars that we otherwise would be spending?
That'd be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Campbell? I didn't have enough. No? All right.
Just one more comment.
Alder Scanell for a second time.
Just another brief one in that I really am worried about cutting too deep with our IRP. We're going to be cutting our own throats next year. I think we've cut enough. I, I really am worried about making more and more cuts. I, I think I should hope those who came in at the beginning of the budget wanting to make cuts should start being pretty happy with the cuts that have been made, I hope. There have been significant reductions here. If we go too far, we're just shooting our foot in the future. We have to be careful about what we're doing. What we do now makes a difference for next year's budget. And you're going to end up just hanging yourself and we're going to be going through all this again when we don't necessarily need to be lowering our budget restraint and putting a noose around our neck for next year. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alder Hutchinson for a second time.
Um, so what I'm hearing being said is putting money over helping cultural diversity expand in the city. And it's not, it's not a lot of money. It's just not a lot of money. It's a big, powerful position and the fact that the chief recommends this position, he's doing his job. He's doing exactly what you want him to do. So he does what you want him to do and then you pull this. That's the true colors I see. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Seeing no further comments, all in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
I asked for a board vote, Mayor.
All right, a board vote has been requested. I think we have to. Alder Steyer, you are on speakerphone. The motion is to reduce funding for the workplace inclusion specialist position.
Entirely.
Entirely, for the, for the entire year. But leave it in the org chart.
Okay, um, I, I do not, my, my vote is no.
All right, Alder Steyer votes no.
Did you get that?
Yep, it's recorded, Alder Steyer. That ties six to six. I would vote no. So that motion fails. Other motions?
Yeah.
Alder Burnett?
So I guess the question, we kind of talked about this a little bit at the last meeting for Clerk Jeffries. When you look at the two thousand twenty-three budget, we have two elections, February and April. And you had indicated additional salaries or payments to election, well, actually, she's not here.
Correct.
Right? Oh, my, my goodness. Director Ellenbecker, my apologies. So hopefully you can answer this question. If we look at the budget for the two thousand twenty-three elections, this says two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, I'm rounding down. In two thousand twenty-one, it was one seventy-eight. Two thousand nineteen, it was one ninety. And then if I go back a little bit further, two thousand seventeen, and I'm just going off, off of the budget book that was proposed. book that was proposed and that was approved, but it was about 143,000, and then it was 138. So we've gone, in the two-year of the odd years, we've gone from 138 to 143 to 190 to 178, and then we jumped to 218. So it's a rather substantial jump. And we were told that it was going to be for additional poll worker pay, which I'm not against, but I want more clarification. When Clerk Jeffries halfway through the year and, you know, leading up to the August and November election, she had requested, which this council approved, additional dollars to fund additional hours for in-person absentee voting. Can you kind of clarify, like, how, how much more are we paying poll workers in Clerk Jeffries' budget? Was there the intent to have extended early in-person absentee voting in the February and April elections?
Thank you, Alder. I do have some limited notes here. So the chief inspector, I think, was, she had increased it up to 340, and I believe it was at two, somewhere around 250 in previous. Then for this year's elections, the wage was increased to 340 for the chief inspectors. And the poll workers went from 140,000, maybe, $140, I'm sorry, for the day, up to $225. So when you multiply by that, that by the number of chief inspectors and poll workers, that is where you're, why you're seeing an increase in elections year over year because of the increase in the poll workers, our daily rate.
Is there, you supervise Clerk Jeffries, correct?
Yes.
Or you manage her? Is there any part of this budget that will, and I'm not saying it like I'm against it, I'm just, I'm curious, are we doing extended in-person absentee voting similar to what we did leading up to August and November this year?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to assume very similar hours. I can't tell you that for, for sure, but I believe that she has, is with the same assumptions of the extended hours.
So we, we have a COVID situation, you know, heaven forbid we ever have another situation where we have a pandemic situation where we can't find poll workers. And it seemed like the November election went relatively smooth, and maybe that's because we paid poll workers more. But I'm curious, in an effort to make, you know, a cut, again, to get to the point that most of us are okay with passing the budget, I'd like to make a motion to decrease the elections line by $18,481, which gets us right at $200,000. Still quite a bit more than what we have budgeted past odd years of elections. So that's my motion.
Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Alder Campbell. Further discussion on it?
Again, what I, what I would say is we've gone from 2015, we went 138, two years later, 143, then 190, then 178. And my motion would be to get us to 200. So it's $22,000 more than two years ago, $10,000 more than four years ago, and quite a bit more than the previous two, 2015, 2017. So it seems logical.
Just a, just a note, I mean, the appropriate analog is four years ago, just in terms of how many elections are being conducted. Alder Johnson?
Wait, wait, clarify that, Mayor, because we don't have elections, partisan elections in November.
Right, I mean, I mean, four years prior to '23. So 2019 is the appropriate comparison year.
With 2021, we had two elections as well.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there's, there's the mayor's election, there's county executive, there's state Supreme Court, so it's, it's very similar.
Turnout, you mean?
Yeah. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, and maybe more, this is just, again, for clarity's sake, this is, this is reducing poll worker pay, right? So at a time we're asking for election integrity, we're reducing the amount we're going to pay poll workers? I don't support that.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments? Alder Scannell?
Just a quick one. I, I heard this last election, there was a few complaints about, you know, some of the poll workers not knowing their job as well as they should, and then senior people had to come in and step in. I think, you know, we really want to keep our poll workers. We want that experience. We don't want to lose it. We want to get more people working and get that experience. So I think this is ill-advised. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Hey, Your Honor. As a poll worker who's worked a few elections, I have to agree with Alder Johnson. The scrutiny is on election integrity, and as we say that we're all about election integrity, we pull the salaries and wages of those that we entrust to make sure our elections are done with integrity. I, I don't understand it. That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, Alder Johnson has come up with a way of getting our budget balanced, actually to the penny that Alder Burnett has asked for, and yet he continues to look at these small issues here, takeaways that do nothing but run down the city instead of building it up. So I'm not in favor of this either. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion? Alder Burnett for a second time.
Yeah, I don't want to get in a back and forth, but again, Alderman Galvin, to his point, Alderman Johnson, although I very much appreciate everything that he did, he's made a lot of really good cuts and suggestions, but again, we're heavily reliant on increasing revenue, which isn't any sure outcome. So a way that we can hedge our, our budget in a way that we don't realize a rosy outcome would be to cut some other expenses in a way that is manageable, so we don't have this significant, I hate using this word, but it just comes back to me, these draconian cuts where we're slashing and doing things that some people in the community are claiming we're, we're considering. I haven't heard a single serious alderman in a serious way suggest any major cut, but we need to make these little minor cuts along the way in order to get, in my opinion, enough of us to support the budget. I don't know how any of you can vote. You can vote however you think you need to vote for your constituents and those you represent, but we're going to probably get right back to the same place, perhaps, possibly, how, I don't, can't predict that, if we don't make and approve some of these minor cuts. We don't have the clerk here, and perhaps I should have asked her these questions more specifically, but there is a bit of an increase. I don't know if it's solely because of the increases to poll workers, which again, I'm not against paying poll workers more, but I, I think if you look at the year after year average in odd years, there is a potential to decrease that. And if it's not enough, then she can come to us mid-year and propose some sort of budget amendment, which I believe this council passed unanimously when she wanted additional funds in the summer and into the fall. So don't, don't, don't buy into this hysteria. We need to cut something, and if we don't make these smaller incremental cuts, it's half which is revenue, and if we don't, we don't meet our revenue goals from the cuts, then we're going to be in, in harm. So we need to cut something, and that's what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I would just say that these little cuts aren't going to amount to much, and that, why cut and then deal with a budget amendment and we're just putting back what we took out? I mean, I, I don't see it being practical. I just don't see this as an exercise that's going to be getting us any closer to what you want, and the more you cut, again, you're going to risk your IRP, lowering your IRP for next year. I think what Alder Johnson came up with, I still don't like those cuts. I, I, but I, I understand, you know, where we're at, and so, okay, but I, I think what he proposed is, is reasonable, and, and I'm hoping that some of the alders who came in wanting all these cuts will reconsider a little bit. I mean, we, we've got the budget numbers that you asked for, and it may not be exactly how you wanted it, but, you know, this isn't exactly how I want it either. So I, I just hope we can, the little cuts, I just don't see them, I mean, we've done this before, nickel and a diamond, and all it does is hurt staff. I don't see it making any big impact on the budget, so, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson for a second time?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, so I want to recognize or acknowledge at least the comment about how my amendment did have some revenue built in, and that is true. If there is a shortfall in revenue, the worst way to address that is to approve the revenue increases and then eliminate the expense side of things where you have flexibility to respond to that. And I want to remind this body again, we're approving a budget that sets the mill rate. There is an incredible amount of flexibility afterwards to make adjustments. We can do that, right? So if revenue comes in less, the expectation of the administration is to figure out how to balance the budget by saying, we're going to reduce expenses in XYZ, or we're going to adjust revenue in XYZ to make sure that we're coming in. If we, if we tax a levy at a certain level, that's how much we have to spend, and if revenue's not met, it's not like we still continue to spend more. And so by eliminating expenses, by nickel and diming the expenses, we actually put ourselves in a worse position. So without a corresponding reduction in revenue, I'm not sure how that makes sense, but I go back, you know, to Alder Scannell's point about, about expenditure restraint. It matters. And I'm not saying we have to max it out, but we have to be sensitive to plugging this with one-time money, which we've done, to try to piece. The, the directive of this council at last meeting was $1.04 million, and that, that amendment was approved, and we met that objective. And I just want to make sure, and this has been my concern all along, is that we don't come back and meet that objective, and then we come back and reduce a bunch more, and then we don't support the budget anyway. And I hope that is not a strategy by anyone on this body, because that would be punishing, I think, to the residents of our city. I go back to, again, $19,000 in poll workers. We've talked about some other small cuts here, but I call your attention again to this chart. You want to make a difference in expenses, start cutting services. Start cutting police, start cutting fire, start cutting public works. It is not draconian, it is not alarmist, it is not hyperbole. If you want substantial expenditure cuts to the budget, it happens in public works, police, and fire that comprises the biggest chunk of our budget. We're, we're debating grains of sand on an entire beach. If you want to make a difference, that's where it's going to be, which, for the record, I do not support, and I do not support the motion.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
No.
We can use the board?
Yeah. What's the motion again?
This is cutting, was it $19,000?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Alder Steyer, we have a roll call vote to cut $19,000 from poll workers.
Yeah, I saw that. I'm a poll worker.
Oh, wait. From elections, it's broader elections.
Oh, broader elections?
Yep.
So that one has to deal with poll workers, or what? Does that deal with poll workers? Yes.
Can we get clarity on the exact motion? Yeah.
The motion was to reduce, which line item?
The election. It was a broad elections line, so it wasn't necessarily poll workers. It was possibility, some flexibility.
All right. Well, I vote, I vote nay. I vote nay.
Alder Steyer votes nay. It's a roll call, so we can't interrupt a roll call. Alder Steyer votes nay?
Yes.
Vote on the board. Your vote's recorded, Alder Steyer. I'm going to put you back on mute.
Okay, thanks.
And that motion fails seven to five. All right, additional comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion here? Alder Weir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we get the final impact and budgetary numbers before we vote?
Yeah, absolutely. Director Ellenbecker?
The proposed budget had a levy request of $64,291,189. Through the changes between the council meetings, where they've reduced their levy by $1,865,252, bringing the levy request down to $62,425,937, leaving a proposed city mill rate of 758.
All right. Any comments on adoption here, Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I actually had more ideas. I'm not going to go through this exercise because I don't think I have the support of at least seven members of council, but, but I do have, I do respect Alder Johnson. He had some wonderful ideas. We did increase the mill rate to nine, or 758, but I do think that those major cuts he's alluding to, no one's suggesting, but I do think some of the smaller cuts get us to what could have been a larger cut without any of the alarming things like cutting police officer positions that no one's in support of, cutting firefighter position, no one's in support of, cutting garbage pickup, no one's in support of. So I'm actually, if I felt like we had some positive traction in some of these smaller cuts that I was proposing, I was willing to do more, but I don't want to go through that exercise. So I want to be voting no on this budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments? Alder Weir?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Alder Burnett. There was a lot of faux hysteria in the social media realms over the last couple days, which is pretty ridiculous. I've been through these quite a bit, and we've made trims here and there, and they haven't affected, you know, we didn't cut out anything major. That's crazy, so. But it was good to see the local chapter of the Tax and Spend Club here tonight. It's always a welcome them back. They show up every so often, so I appreciate their presence. The people in my district were pretty clear, and I read you a lot of their comments, probably a third of them, in that, you know, they really wanted a responsible budget, which, you know, we were given a horrible, ghastly budget, and we trimmed it down to a, a bad budget, you know, probably very bad budget. There's still probably a lot in here that we could pursue, but I think just looking at the lay of the land, there's going to be a lot of tie votes here that'll fail. And so I'm going to vote against this because I think there is some room to, to improve. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I think one of the struggles, I think, that I've experienced at least from the very first budget that I voted on, is sometimes it's hard to have that crystal ball and understand just how far folks want to go, right? And so sometimes I think human nature kicks in, and you dig your heels in a little bit because you don't know what the next item's going to be, and it becomes sort of this exercise of just cut, 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 rather than presenting a responsible budget that protects certain services. And, and I think, you know, cutting without a plan goes back to fiscal intelligence versus fiscal responsibility. One of the reasons I presented my motion the way that I did is sort of this omnibus proposal, is because then you could see everything that was in my head at least. I really don't like our process. It's not for us to fix today, you know, but, but I, you know, I, I bring this point up because certainly, I appreciate Alder Burnett's point that he has other motions that he would entertain, and I think I would have a lot easier time contemplating those if they were offered as an omnibus type of proposal, and then we could really have a thoughtful discussion about the impact of that. I think, to your point, a little bit here and there doesn't necessarily hurt programs dramatically, but depending to what extent that goes, it does impact expenditure restraint dramatically and really digs us in a hole for next year. It does. And, and so I, I just kind of wanted to at least bring that up. It's up to Alder Burnett if he wants to, you know, kind of propose all those items at once or not. He doesn't, certainly doesn't have to. He's under no obligation to do so. But in my mind at least, when I process the intelligence behind any vote, I like to know the scope of everything that's being contemplated.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with, with Alder Johnson. Intelligence versus responsibility. It's our responsibility to make sure that we have a fair budget that covers the things that our constituents want. To go out and just try to cut things for the sake of cutting it, so that we can stand up on our box, pound our chest, and say we fought for the common guy, doesn't make sense when we're hurting the common guy by doing it. You see where the city is right now? We've just finished or stopped ourselves from taking out long-term loans for police vehicles that don't last half the life of the loan. We have roads that are in bad shape, and we've been struggling for the last couple of years to try and get the more roads done. We have staffing issues. In fact, we're getting some roads this year, there were roads in my district that were supposed to be done this year, that weren't done because we can't hire staff, because we're not paying them enough. And yet, at the same time, when we come to budget, we have certain alders that want to cut and cut and cut again, and this is where we're cut again, and this is where we're at. The police department is just finally getting up to its staffing levels. And when I was on a department, I remember clearly a meeting sitting there where we were told we weren't gonna hire six people for up to six months to make our budget work. I mean, it's these kind of things that we tell the citizens, "We want police services," but then we're making proposals to hold hiring, or eliminate positions, or hold positions, and this, we end up with the mess we have. We painted ourselves in a corner so that we could look at people, and I don't think there's that many people that really are, I mean, what do we hear from? How many people really came out today to say they wanted cuts, cuts, cuts? We didn't hear that today. What we heard was people that wanted us to have, spend the money on our departments, so that we can have a decent place for us to live. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell?
Yes, I wanna thank Alder Johnson and Alder Burnett, and also Alder Weary. These are senior members of our thing, and I've always respected them for their work and what they've done. I've zoomed in on meetings. I've listened to all the council, all the breakdown of everything. Just today, I also wanna thank the people that, and Press Gazette for throwing out a scary article this weekend. I got a lot of calls today, so I appreciate that, coming from my district. But I will have to say, if I kept score all day long, I was out sitting in my tree stand this morning, two hundred miles away, texting everybody, telling them I'll do the best I can for my district, the score was, "Don't raise my taxes." And maybe the constituents don't quite understand it, like it says in the All Week News, but, you know, one of the things that I wanted to do was, you know, as the lowest voter turnout district, is I wanna educate the people, and first I have to educate myself. So I really appreciate the alders' work that they did all the way around, but I wish we could've did more, so I'm gonna go with what's best for me and my district, and I'm not gonna support this budget.
So, Alder Burnett, for a second time?
Yeah, my final time. I think we have a divided council at times, and I don't think that that's a bad thing. There's twelve of us, thirteen if you count the mayor, with different perspectives. We represent different parts of the city, and perhaps have people, different people calling us. And so overall, I would say that there are a lot of people concerned in my district with inflationary costs and the height of the housing market. We reassessed, and I know this was a couple-year process, but the reality is, we reassessed the height of an inflationary period, and money could dry up in the economy, interest rates rising, people's values that they're assessed at this year may not be what their true value of their property is next year. So that is a consideration as well. I will comment, and I do, again, I have all due respect to each and every one of you, including the mayor. I know we disagree sometimes, but that's okay. We have a divided government in the state of Wisconsin, we have a divided government in the federal government, and people seem to like this divided government, because it makes sure that everyone's voices are heard. Sometimes you win a vote, sometimes you lose a vote. But what I'll say, and with all due respect to all of my colleagues, I will say, when we talk about like this divided, perhaps six-six vote, I don't know what it's gonna end up being, vote your conscience. But Alderman Galvin, quite frankly, if I'm being honest, I think if I were to propose some of the cuts that Alderman Johnson suggested, you probably wouldn't have supported those. So I think that sometimes, as a council, things like a modest decrease of five thousand dollars in postage that wasn't approved, a reduction of a position that probably could go a little bit longer without being filled, that was voted down, minor reduction in firefighter overtime, that was voted down. I love his ideas. I think that it gives us some flexibility, but again, if the revenue is not generated that is proposed, we have some more things that we can cut, but at the table, if we're not willing to make the cuts now, I'm not quite sure we'd be willing to make the cuts then. So I'm just gonna reiterate my support. You all can vote your conscience. There's no hard feelings here. I'm gonna not support this budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other final comments?
One final quick one.
Alder Johnson, for a second time?
Thank you, just real quick. So I just kinda wanted to piggyback off that a little bit, and I recognize not everybody will probably support this budget, and of course, Alder Burnett has specifically said, and Alder Weary too, that they're not there yet, and that's okay, because I, what I do wanna acknowledge, though, folks, is that a lot of hard work was still done on this document, and a lot of compromise was still made on this document. We have over two million dollars of reduced levy impact. That's not for nothing, right? There's some work that went into that. There are some priorities that were, or items that were reprioritized to honor and deliver, I think, program support in certain areas. So to Alder Burnett's point, that is kind of the side effect of a divided government sometimes, and I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. It's a sign of good compromise, good discussion. I do wanna just, the one thing I'm gonna hit, though, is the revaluation, because that has come up a number of times, and of course, we have been this victim of not having done that. This council has made, not this one, sitting here, but the Green Bay City Council, made the conscious decision not to do revaluations for that period of time. We shot ourselves in the foot, and we made the decision to do revaluation two years ago, long before we knew inflation was gonna take off, long before we knew the impact that that was going to have. And of course, now we ended up in the last possible year that it could be implemented, before the state stepped in and did it. So really, that's why I've said this before, I don't think that that issue really weighs on my decision, because what it does is it redistributes property tax value or assessable value, and of course, then the property taxes that go with that, it equitably distributes it, based on what people are supposed to be paying. That is a fair and equal system that was created by the state, really has nothing to do with us, and it is not going to weigh on my decision for this budget, because at the end of the day, it shouldn't. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter. But what I do hope is that this council can consciously make the decision in the future to not have to wait ever seventeen years to do a revaluation, and that we make intentional decisions to do that, to Alder Burnett's point. If we do have folks that are at this level, but in two years, the market adjusts, and that number should be down here, then let's give them that fair adjustment, and I think we need to do that more frequently, more regularly. It's also gonna mean we need to budget for that expense, and expenditure restraint is going to impact that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Any other, Alder Scannell?
I'll be quick, as my other tax and spend. Yeah, I believe in taxes, 'cause they pay the bills, and I believe in being responsible, and I believe in living in a big city. I wanna live in a big city, and a big city is vibrant, and a big city is growing. If it's not doing that, then it's dying, and you don't wanna be living in a dying city. The problems we'd have then would be horrendous. So to keep your city going, you gotta invest in it. So, and again, I brought this up last time, I wanna reiterate it again, make sure everybody remembers, there are other municipalities, municipalities, them too, that their tax rate is much higher on their residents. Now, maybe they've been better with their assessments, so they're not that hit, but they're dealing with inflation too, and they're still taxing their residents higher. So I think, sure, we're tax and spend, but we could be a lot, lot worse. Count your blessings. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, will signify by saying, "We need a resolution."
Yep. So we need a board vote on this, Alder Johnson?
Alder Stoyer?
Yes.
We are voting on the final resolution, yes or no on the budget.
Okay, I'd like, can I make a small statement?
Yeah, Mayor, can we hold off the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Alder Stoyer.
All right, thank you. I wish I was with all of my colleagues tonight. We're in a snowstorm in Massachusetts, but other than that, everything's fine. But I appreciate everything you folks are doing on this, looking at this budget. I voted against it initially. We did make some cuts. I talked with a few of the alders during the week, and I really feel like if we can, there's gotta be a bottom number somewhere. You know, we had six million dollar expenditure restraint. We knocked it down a couple million. You know, you got, we gotta, we gotta compromise. We gotta do something here. And I, the resolution is to agree with the budget. I've had numerous citizens call me while I'm on vacation, that for twenty-one dollars extra, they're fine with it. So I vote yes on the resolution.
Alder Stoyer votes yes?
What's that?
Just recording your vote, Alder.
Okay. So this is the vote for the budget, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
All right.
Mayor, it looks like there's someone that might wanna speak.
We do have a roll call.
Okay.
That's ongoing. Apologies.
No problem.
So, surprise, surprise, we have a tie vote. I would vote in favor. I think it's pretty darn important to fund all of our critical services in the city. It's a core responsibility that I have, and it's a core responsibility of our council as well, so I vote in favor.
All right, so we are on to adjourn, before we get to adjournment, though, I do wanna recognize a council for all the efforts that they put into this process, but also our staff, who have spent an inordinate amount of time putting everything together, especially Director Ellenbecker and President Hamlin. I also wanna recognize, breaking a little bit of news here, I think everybody knows that Chief Litten is departing here at the end of the year, but wanna devote some special recognition to him for his nine and a half years of service to the city of Green Bay. And the breaking news part, I might have to apologize to him, but Director Veronica is also going to be leaving us at the end of this year, twenty-five years of service to the city. So very much appreciate everything that Mike's done for me and my tenure, but more importantly, for the city as a whole, so.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.
All right.